With us tonight for our invocation have Pastor Kim Gatter with impact church. If you would stand for invocation, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance immediately following.
You guys pray with me. Our precious family, Father, we come before your throne tonight, Father, and we just thank you so much for this beautiful day. We thank you and praise you not only for what you do for us, Father, but just for who you are. So, Father, as your word tells us, that everything has to have order, God. We just pray over this meeting tonight, Father. We pray for wisdom, for guidance, for discernment, and every decision that's made here today, Father. And we thank you for each and every member that's present tonight, Father, for their dedication to this city. And this is just such a beautiful little city, Father, and we just pray that as we make decisions tonight, Father, that you will get the glory for everything that happens here tonight. Thank you again for this beautiful day, Father, and for bringing us together and for the freedom that we have to do what we do. And I pray all these things in Jesus' precious name, and amen.
Thank you, Mr. Gatter.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Martha.
Clear.
Here.
Hany.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Perry.
Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Perry did contact me earlier, said he was feeling good this morning, but he's not feeling so well right now, so he's not able to make it. Next on the agenda, we have the perigual minutes from the regular council meeting of April 28th, 2022, and the strategic planning committee meeting of April 29th, 2022.
The regular council meeting minutes, April 28th, 2022, page two. Although Martha, he, Mr. DeCastro interrupted the vote on probably page three somewhere, I just wanted to make sure it's in the minutes that he did say he makes $3,000 a month for YouTube. Make sure that's part of the minutes.
Any other edits, additions, or missions? On here, none others. Those minutes have been approved. Next up, we have audience participation. If you'd like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name and address. You will have five minutes to state your concerns, questions, or comments. I have several things, but I'll save it for miscellaneous, if that's okay, because I know the connection is tenuous.
Okay.
All right, moving on to communications. We have a letter from the Vision of Liquor Control and a license for the Marlowe material.
Correct.
Move that we do not request a hearing.
We have a motion by Craig, and I say my line, roll call, please.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Requesting that. Other communications, I do have a letter that was left on my door. Mayor had a copy, the state's vice mayor, Hany, and council members, residents, neighborhood of the, it's, the address is actually 2006 South H Street. We're going to make this part of the minutes, but basically the summary of it is they're worried about drug rehab ads, certain people purchasing the drug rehabilitation and moving them into a residential neighborhood. So, I will make a motion to put these in the regular council meetings.
Correct. I'll take that. Roll call, please, Martha.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
These will be included in the regular council meetings of tonight. Onto ordinances, Martha, would you please give ordinance 2226, first reading?
An ordinance creating necessary inspections and application fees for food trucks operating within the city of Ironton and declaring an emergency third reading.
Correct. This sprung out of work at the Strategic Planning Committee, and we had a really good discussion, lengthy discussion, one night with some of our, what did they, mobile?
Mobile vendors.
Mobile vendors and food trucks. I don't want to exclude the people that don't do food because we learned that night that there are more than just food trucks operating in our city. But we had a really good lengthy discussion, and I think that this, although my name is on Mike and Jacob's is, I think it pretty fairly reflects all of our conversations and concerns they had, and the give and take that we had with them, and adjusting for things that we didn't consider, you know, I mean, we were just trying to get a handle on something that was going on in our city and didn't consider, you know, special events and weekends that we might want to invite people in. So, I think this is a well filed out, been hashed out through the Strategic Planning Committee, and so it, you know, if there's no other discussion, I'll move in a minute and give additional readings.
Craig, I agree with what you said. This is kind of the new industry somewhat. I know, not necessarily in the larger cities, but around here in smaller communities, it's a new industry popping up all over the place. I think, you know, Mr. Pierce and Mr. Hawk did a good job of rewording the ordinance, the original ordinance, and I would like to thank the vendors for coming in and addressing council with their concerns. And actually, I mean, it was a team effort to put this together, a fair ordinance together for this. Appreciate everybody's effort.
We really did try to do that, and when you look at other cities, it's all over the place, from a hundred dollars a day to fifty dollars a year. And figuring out what's fair and equitable, it is quite a challenge. I do have one question, and in the ordinance, we call it local businesses, do we need to change that in the title of the ordinances to our solicitor, to not say food truck and to say local business instead?
Well, we worked back and forth on that at that meeting, so it's really up to you if you want it to apply to all local businesses, although the way we, if you recall, we took out a couple of sections, and really it only applies to food trucks, the way I've been talking. So, there is, in one of the whereas, we prefer the local businesses still, but if you look at the body of the ordinance, which is actually what makes it the law, I think really it was food trucks. So, if your desire to make it apply to, you know, we talked about that, the hard thing, it was just hard to narrow that down, if you recall that.
So, I think we could leave it as food trucks, and if we need to come back and adjust that, we can.
I think that was the consensus that night. I don't want to speak out loud, but I think that was the consensus that night, and our major concern was over the inspection because of food preparation and fire prevention, and that that's kind of where we landed, right, Martha, if you call.
That was my.
Sounds good to me.
You know, if you want to apply another business, probably the best thing is to grab separate rules, because it's going to be quite different for adult.
Thank you. Correct.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 2226, second, third reading, by title only.
Mark. Second motion. We have a motion, five. Craig, I say my line, suspend the rules. Roll call, please, Martha.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Suspend the rules. Martha, would you please give ordinance 2226, second, third reading, by title only.
An ordinance creating necessary inspections and application fees for food trucks operating within the city of Ironton and declaring an emergency, second reading. An ordinance creating necessary inspections and application fees for food trucks operating within the city of Ironton and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Correct.
Move to adopt ordinance 2226.
Mark, second. Motion by Craig, I say my line, to adopt ordinance 2226. Roll call, please, Martha.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Orders 2226 have been adopted. Moving on to resolutions, Martha, would you please give resolution 2225, read.
Abduction of the Lawrence County Ohio Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, October 2021, and declaring.
Bob. Make a motion to pass resolution 2225.
I'll second.
Correct.
Discussion. Discussion. So, this wasn't, this thing wasn't attached, and I'm not going to be naive, but I don't recall discussing this, I've just like, a summary, so some synopsis, like.
I agree with Craig. Mayor, do you have anything that you can kind of give us a rundown? Because that's a packet, I just, I just got this, I don't.
Yeah, we just have to adopt that to stay within the floodplain program, hazard mitigation for FEMA funding whenever disasters happen, and that has to be filed through our, Lawrence County EMA, has to be on file. There's no expenditure of funds.
Good.
Yep.
Any other discussion? We have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike. Roll call, please, Martha.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution 2225 is passed. Moving on to resolution 2227, would you please give resolution 2227, read.
2022 Salary Resolution, Establishing Salaries for Non-Unioned Employees.
Make a motion to pass resolution 2227.
I'll note that, I'll second it, and I'll note that it received favorable recommendation in finance. A little bit of discussion, Nate, I appreciate you working on that, but put a lot of work into that. That's not an easy thing, looking at all that stuff, so I appreciate you, Mayor, for getting on that, getting that ready for us. Good, have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike. Roll call, please, Martha.
Larry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution 2227 was passed. Moving on to miscellaneous, and then Mike has some miscellaneous.
I was contacted by a few people, first Paul Wilks, 1955, North Fourth Streets. He asked that the city engineer and the stormwater manager look into installing a manhole, a French drain, or some sort of diversion of the water that comes down Gold Camp Street, the hill, and is cooling in front of his driveway. It's particularly bad in the winter because it freezes and breaks up the asphalt and is destroying his driveway. He asked me to mention that to council tonight to see if we could do something.
What's that address on there?
1955, North Fourth, Paul Wilks. I was also contacted by Lon Hilton of 1723 North Second, and he had an issue with some semi trucks, 18 wheelers, and some dump trucks that were hauling, I think, cinder for the railroad to do some of the work they're doing, and they're jake braking and speeding down Second Street, 22 floodwalls there. And he asked that I look into that, and I did, and we have in our, in our Ironton ordinances, our codified ordinances, 432.35 deals with vehicle noise and tracking and unnecessary noise. It doesn't say jake braking per se, but I think it's implied because that's an unnecessary noise. And Mr. Hilton asked if we could put up some signs, no jake braking and that sort of thing in that area and maybe somewhere else around town. So, I told him I would mention that to council this evening and see what we could work out. If we needed legislation to do something like that, I'd be glad to sponsor that, work on that. He also mentioned the weeds on the sidewalk along the flood wall in front of Elm Street there. The grass is just taking over the sidewalk, and he feels like that's a detriment to the beauty of our city.
It's going towards Elm, right? Just no sidewalk on that, basically, right?
Oh, it's right, it's the sidewalk right against the flood wall. You can hardly see it because it's covered with grass between Storm Street and the overpass.
And it's been like that for a long time.
Yeah. He mentioned that years ago, it was cleaned up, and, you know, we had a big discussion about whether EPA would allow us to do lots of roundup and that kind of thing. And he said, if we could look at.
On the flood wall, like, if you're coming up Elm to Second, you could look straight at the flood wall there.
Also, I was approached by Joni Igoe, she lives at Lovin Street in McGovernie. There's a car wash across from her house, and she's brought this to our attention. She believes the owner's Mr. Ron Walker, and his car washed. She sent me 16 pictures, it's got lots and lots of trash that's spilling over, it's on the ground, it's blowing around the neighborhood, and she has asked if we could address that at some point, somehow. Yes.
Correct.
It's got, it's not just trash, it's got, there's couches out behind there. I actually took my car up there to try to spray some detergent on there, none of the, none of the stalls even work, so, I mean, calling it a car wash is nice, but it doesn't actually wash cars.
Would that be considered vacant?
There's a building up there that used to be a car wash.
I know, I mean, I know what you're talking about. Would that be considered vacant if they're not generating revenue? Well, it depends on what their status is with the water.
The vacuums do work. I went up there, and they work.
Couldn't vacuum a car.
But it is horrible, there's just, there's a trickle of trash up there.
There is.
There's more trash up there.
Yeah, we can cite them, and then if we have to, we clear it up and assess the attack before. What is that, McGovernie?
Yeah, I love it from McGovernie.
Car wash. Yeah, I don't think that's McGovernie, that would be.
That should be.
I think.
She may live on McGovernie.
She may live on McGovernie, but I don't know if he's.
He's right across the other house.
I'll take Street Park.
It's a couple blocks.
That should be.
They didn't have a license, 14.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah, Mike, I made just one comment for the record, he's talking about jake brakes, the New York Russell Bridge, they'll likely use jake brakes on it, and, you know, I live, didn't like to see it, and at night, they come down, they use the jake brakes, I mean, it's awful. So, they start looking, putting signs up, or trying to nail the people with, I know that bridge, there was no, they had called jake brakes, they called engine brakes or something. So, they're looking at that one, look at Russell Bridge.
Absolutely. We sent some people down there, when you called me about that the other.
Yes.
Mike called me about that the other day, and I sent some officers down to check it out.
And I followed up with Mr. Hilton, and he said, he saw police units down there, and amazingly, that stopped. So, he just, he appreciated that very much and wanted me to pass that on.
Bob.
I think that the days of that slide being given away freeze gone, they had a lot of places shut down for two weeks, where they were changing all the ballots, road ballots. They put the word out, it's free, just bring a truck, come and get it, and there was a truck backed up for a city block waiting in line to get it, and I know they were going out and down, I presume, Second Street all the way to Hank Rock bottom, but I think the rubber has completed their project there, it may be going on down further, but from New York Russell Bridge or Second Street landing, up past me, there's nothing going on now. They had a good job, they did clean the streets there, but, I mean, the streets look very terrible, except for the potholes.
I was hoping they were going to put some of those rocks in there, because I take that for granted.
Yeah, but anyway, it's, I think it's down the deal, so you probably have to worry about this truck running Second Street.
So, we can just kind of wait and see, monitor the situation, and if we need to do something, we can later.
I definitely think you need to monitor the jake brakes.
Correct.
Just make mention that our next meeting by ordinance is the Monday before Memorial Day, next Monday, rather than Thursday, Tuesday, maybe, nine.
We have maybe not, I don't know if there's by errors, maybe.
I'd like to request a, what's it called, zoning workshop for May 18th at 5:00. Purpose is to interview two possible zoning consultants, to update our city zoning code and zoning maps. Remember, this is something we talked about, as far as very important for the future for our city, and addressing a lot of the issues that we're having. I got to speak with them, and they said, you know, they're working with other cities to address a lot of the same issues that we're facing, and I'd like, if we're not able to attend, that's fine, I'd just like to carry on with that, and I want to keep moving.
Correct. Is that here in council chambers?
Yes, here in council chambers. We're going to put them, put them right there on the board.
Put them here.
Would you care?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
Because they're attorneys, so it'd be nice to have another attorney in the room. Yeah. Five, ones at five and ones at six. There's two different ones, they're out of Cincinnati. Yeah.
Is now, are they going to be, they're going to be in person, or we resume?
Yeah, we're putting it on the, yeah.
Okay, so, 18th, 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, zoning workshop with consultants for zoning. Monday, the charter is through the charter, is our regularly scheduled council meeting, the final Thursday, or the last May meeting is through charter, held on that Monday, the 23rd, due to Navy Knights.
Correct.
For three ordinance, no doubt. Due to the city's observance of Navy Knights. One thing I would like to mention is the pickleball tournament that's going to be held on the 28th, it's filling up pretty fast. I know we've got a few teams in there, I think we hit double digits. I did go by there today, but we're supposed to have a banner with some information for the players to show where you can sign up and everything like that. I believe they lost track of that. I think Brett picked it up, I'm not sure if you guys on the red. Also, I will make sure that you guys get, Martha, do you care to scan that email up to council? So, we'll put it in the minutes, we'll scan the email to council. Mayor, do you have any of that?
Yeah, I have a lot of things. First, just some quick updates. I got, I met with Caiova yesterday when we were at the State House lobbying for transportation dollars. We're going to meet with them the 23rd or the 24th, we haven't established yet. They seem to be willing to pay for the design on the parking project that I sent out to you guys, which will be huge for us. As you remember, that's a $2 million paving project, we have a million dollars. So, every little bit of help that they can give towards that will go a long way, and we're hoping to get more help from them after we get the design and everything going. So, we hope to get that design started and hopefully have something ready to go next spring, summer, so we can do all the work. As I said, if we have to use just the straight amount of money that we have and no federal dollars, it's only going to get half that work done. Also, working on the DORA with friends of Ironton, Tim Wolfe, meeting with the solicitors this coming week to draw up our own language to submit to you guys for that. And I got some news yesterday that we were added to the Ohio River Way organization. It's a travel and tourism organization that promotes the, you know, you can look it up on ohio recreation trail dot org, but essentially what it is, is a, it's a river trail that promotes the travel and tourism of each little town on the way, so we will now be the first stop westbound from here to Louisville, or West Point, Kentucky, is it? Yeah, West Point, Kentucky. It originally was Portsmouth, now we've been added to it, so this is good news. Last thing I want to talk about is this communication that was given to you for the council minutes. I want to say, it's demanding that the administration's enforcing these ordinances, requiring the registration of rehabilitation, sober living operations, the moratorium, zoning regulations. You know, we've been doing that, we've been registering, making sure every time we're notified of somebody that has one of these houses, we're following up, making sure they're registered, making sure the zoning's being enforced. If they were grandfathered in with the five rule, you know, we're making sure that they weren't already violating that, say we had six when they were supposed to be five. Anything new would be at the three level, which we will make sure, whatever the case is on this property that they're specifically talking about, you know, we will continue to make sure the zoning, the registration, and the moratorium are enforced as directed by what the council drew up. However, it's ultimately up to the judge to determine if it's fined or if it's stopped. So, once we do the initial citing, it's really out of our hands, okay? I'm not coming at you guys, I'm just saying to whoever, there's 56 names on here, that's a lot of people, and they do matter, and it's saying that we're not, we're not addressing this, but we are to what capacity we can. And so, moving on to the next part, they're asking about how much income tax revenue the city is receiving from rehabilitation groups, home sober living operations, and regarding the mechanism or procedure of enforcement of income tax registration collection and enforcement for such operations, I want to ask you guys to direct the finance department to address that because I don't have access to that. That's all.
One thing, Mayor, do you care to give, can you email council the register, the list that we have from registrations for that?
Yeah.
John, so, because, I mean, I'm sure people have been asked, how many people's on? I don't know how many, how many drug rehabilitation places have registered, so I can't really give them a list, but is there any way we could maybe get like a bimonthly update or, you know, just a list, just send out to council, just to say, hey, this is how many we have, we've had a couple new.
Yeah, you could call anytime and ask too, so, I mean, if there's been anything.
John, now, let me ask you this, is, are we giving, when they register, are we giving them a packet to make sure that they're giving their employees income tax forms for them to fill out?
I don't know of anybody that has been in to register, I would have to, not saying that they haven't, it's that I'm going to have to find that out.
Well, what I'd like to request is that whoever's on this. Well, what I'd like to request is that whoever's on this list, we, we give income tax registration forms to everybody that has registered so far. So if they, if they register, that I, that's part of the, that was part of the ordinance and that's what council envisioned when we created this ordinance was, you know, was, you know, dotterized across my teeth. So I would like to add maybe a packet for registration as soon as, you know, somebody comes in and, and registers with us. We give them all the proper documentation that they need through, uh, to also be, um, compliant with the income tax department.
Exactly. Yeah, absolutely. We, and that'd be great for us to be able to get a list of who's registered too.
So it'll be a lot better communication if we do that. So maybe a bi- bi- bi-monthly list and then, uh, we can go through those. Nice. I don't care to help you at all. Go through those lists and get those, uh, that have registered with us income tax forms. Thank you.
Do we need executive session for property?
Executive session.
Also pay me back litigation online with the solicitor.
Who do you need?
Uh, Rob Klein and Rick Johnson.
No action follows for me.
Finance director, solicitor.
Which one do you guys want first? Do you need, who, who do you need, Craig?
Just solicitor.
So councilman's solicitor and that's it? So we're going to go. So we're going to go with, uh, we're going to go with Robert first and then, okay, so. Nate.
Second.
Who made the motion, Craig?
Yep.
Motion by Craig, second by Nate, to enter executive session regarding property and litigation. Roll call please.
Before we do that, just a reminder that PUC workshop has previously been called from May twenty-third at six o'clock.
Five o'clock. Five o'clock. Our council meeting is at six. It was at five.
Okay, it has to be at five o'clock. I called it for six because I was unaware of that. Be five o'clock if it's five o'clock, PUC.
Am I good?
We're going to promote that deadline's coming up.
Oh, yeah, I missed that. I sent the text out, but also, um, high ethics commission, final reminder. I did have that in my notes also. But I sent the text out, forgot about it. So that is, uh, that is Wednesday, or is that not Wednesday? May the sixteenth. It says, uh, you need to, you know, five, about May the sixteenth.
We may want to remind Mr. Perry of that because it's his first time and, yeah, finance hefty.
Ten dollars a day.
Hundred dollars a day.
What is it?
It's a hundred dollars.
He would say there's a motion on the floor already.
Just tell me what. Just to get executive session.
Okay. I think you've talked about the further discussion.
Yeah, don't forget about high ethics mission. All right, roll call please, Martin.
Larry.
My takes are that this will be a five minute meeting, so all the, uh, five minutes.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
All right. Thanks everybody for coming. We are now entering executive session. Jacob, I'm, I'm, I'm not five percent. I may have somebody else.